Marth?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Bridgeway?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Klepper?
Here.
Need approval of the November the fifteenth, regular council meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Have before you the bills to be paid? Any questions? Off the bills? I entertain a motion to accept them. Unless you have a question.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Marth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Text on the agenda is Erica Willitzer from the Defiance County CIC to address about Vancrest.
Hi there, how are you guys doing tonight? So I'm here tonight to talk about enterprise zone agreement with Hicksville Health Facilities LLC, Vancrest of Hicksville, which they are looking to build a new facility at forty-one twenty-five State Route eighteen. It's gonna be a fifty-one thousand square foot facility. And the construction, the real property value will be nine point one million. The total investment will be eleven million. Currently, they have thirty-one employees, they're looking to add fifteen. Their new payroll will be one point three million annually added to what they're already existing is. And so what I'm asking for tonight is a resolution of support. So they're in the process of trying to get annexed into Hicksville. So typically, we would wait to do this. But since it takes so long to get processed through the state, they're wanting to break ground in early twenty-twenty-two. What I'm going to do is get a resolution of support from your council, hopefully if you approve, and then also request the trustees in Hicksville Township to also review and give a resolution of support. It's right there on the edge, so it would really just be a nice add anyways when we're doing our application to the state. Trying to think if there's anything else that I need to add about the project, oh, the school donations. So the schools, Hicksville and Ford County Career Centers have already approved a resolution of support for this. And Hicksville exempted village schools would get close to eleven thousand dollars per year for the donation. And Ford County would get close to twenty-two hundred. So those have already been the agreed-upon amounts. Any questions regarding this enterprise zone agreement?
I'm just more curious about the process. So I guess what, at this point, and even if they were annexed, what is the village's role in this?
So I also had a lot of questions with that early on with, and I talked to the mayor and Troy. So it is the responsibility of the company to do all the annexation. Their legal counsel will handle that. The county commissioners, the process, the approval process has to go through the commissioners. And the commissioners gave us a checklist of things that they have to do, which most of it is through their attorneys.
So this is essentially just a formality and a blessing?
Yeah.
That we're supporting it?
Yeah. And I mean, I'm assuming that you guys are okay with the annexation and all that, which is, which will be coming. So this is just, with the enterprise zones, it does take some time to get processed. I'm trying to do my due diligence, making sure that I have all that done. So that when the new year comes and they want to break ground, they can do it whenever if there's nicer weather. I know that Mark White, who I've been working with, has said that they'd probably do it in spring. But if he can do it sooner, I know he will.
Everybody got a copper, copy of the resolution, so?
This is annexed in. Tonight, we say yes, it's annexed in. Who's responsible to provide utilities out to them?
So the annexation will, would not happen at all tonight?
This is the annexation.
That would be a separate.
But once they're annexed in, and that will happen before we decide who's running utilities unless it's already been decided. Who's going to do that?
So the mayor has been working with them, and it seems like it should be a fairly-
Water already goes right by them.
The water goes that far?
Right by from the school over to DOTCO, used to be DOTCO.
Oh, okay, yeah. Let's do it.
For their sprinkler system. And the sewer is right there at the edge. Sanitary.
It goes that far? I know, I know, lift station. Lift station's right at the bridge. Okay. But now that we know where they are, who's providing it? Village?
Well, they have to pay for the tap. I mean, the water's there. So, but the water in the sewer, sanitary? That's, it's right there close.
That would be the only reason why they would be moving forward on their annexation.
Right. I just wonder.
It would be a really good thing.
It's, they're fortunate, you know, the gas is right there across the street. So all the utilities, if it had been somewhere else, like there on the other side of the school, we'd had to extend out, or somebody would have had to extend. And I know there's grants to extend sewers for something like this, but I don't think it's gonna be necessary.
And will they, will they provide their own storm system and hopefully a retention pond instead of-
I saw. Stay required of that.
Wonderful.
The other thing I wanted to add is, I have given them one of the Hicksville Job Creation Program applications. I haven't received that back yet, but I know once it gets closer to, you know, the facilities up and running, I'll probably be coming back to the council for that. Again, it is fifteen new jobs.
So is this essentially the commercial application of the CRA?
It's the enter, it's the enterprise zone, which they're very similar in how they're structured.
That's, the terminology was kind of confusing, me anyway, because I wasn't sure. And then it was also basically the tax payment, so I wasn't sure if they're, will they be coming back for the CRA additionally? Or just this?
No. The, so the CRA would be, let's say, once they get annexed in.
Correct.
And let's say they decide, okay, we're gonna do an annexation down the road, three, four years ago. Then they could apply for the CRA.
Okay.
But at this moment, they're only eligible for the easy.
Yeah, okay. And then, I'm not sure if you know this, but this is more of a question for, you know, three or four years when they, or whenever they decide to actually get annexed. The way that our CRA is written, have you looked into that at all?
It's like seventy-five percent or something.
Well, well, not necessarily the parameters, but more the bounds. Are we gonna have to basically update the boundary of what the CRA is? Or is the terminology written so as it includes all of the village?
I think it's written, the way, I'm writing one for day right now. And I did one, an expansion in Defiance. And they usually make it so it's within your village limits.
Okay.
But I think it's always good that we review those. So if there, if there is an issue, we can actually go back and I can file a new application to the state.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're gonna be ahead of it, so that's coming.
I will, I will take a view, a review of it again.
Okay.
What, there's a, an application fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars. But that typically requires, so let's say you want to expand in an area that has new housing, that let's say you start getting a big development. We would actually have to prove that there was a need there in order to get it to apply. So there's a lot of rules with CRA's. Yeah.
That makes sense.
But I will review it and make sure we're okay. But just, if my memory serves me correctly, it is within the village limits.
Okay.
Any other questions for Erica?
Do we want to move on this now then, Mayor?
I'll do that on Troy's. I'll do it then. Troy's not here, so I'll do the, read the resolution, if that's okay.
Sure. Okay.
Do you know what their intentions are for their old building?
I have heard that they're looking to donate it. And I, and I don't know if the folks that they had originally reached out to are agreeable to that. I know that some are and some are not. So I'm not quite sure yet.
That is their intention.
I am trying to, I think there's gonna require a large capital if that happens. So that's something that I would, I'll, once they find out an end user, I can try to figure that out. Because the end user, if it's not-for-profit, then I can try to find some grants for them. But if it's for-profit, that's a little harder. But we could use a CRA. There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's possible we could be getting a new business in that building.
Depending on what Vancrest decides to do with it, yeah.
Do you know how old the building is?
I do not know how old, I know it does need a lot of-
Sixties?
Yeah.
It does need updates. I have, there was a developer that I was talking with that actually, that's his specialty, is rehabbing, you know, facilities like that, so, and turning them into condos. So that might be a possibility as well. But again, that's all, I don't know where that's gonna go.
I've met with the president, Mark White, several times.
Yeah.
Notch company.
Oh, yeah.
They're from all over this area. It's not an organization from New York. They're out of Van work, so it's a good, good company.
And I think what's gonna happen, you know, while they're gonna be providing a great, you know, service to the community, you're gonna be pulling in a lot of families from outside areas. That, there's a lot of areas that are booked, and they, they don't have the nursing or the, you know, the hospice care that they have. So you're pulling a lot of areas where, you know, they can go to the restaurants and everything else here in Hicksville.
So any other questions for Erica? Make sure you work. Okay, boards, commissions, minutes from the CRA meeting, November the seventeenth. You have in your packet any questions on that? Council committee reports, ordinance committee met twenty-third of November.
Yeah, we met before Thanksgiving and talked about the creation of an ordinance for required background checks for individuals that are coaching in sports on village-owned properties. Some of the highlights from the meeting was that background checks need to be completed at least once, at least once per three-year period. We do want that the village will have the ability to verify the service that's being used for those background checks. Anyone that got and passed last year will be grandfathered in, so they don't have to do background checks again this upcoming coaching year. The only thing we didn't, we weren't able to actually get the ordinance created yet was we want to see clarification on the difference between a lifetime ban, and then there's some offenses that could only be a ten-year ban if they serve time and restitution, and then there's also an opportunity for just a three-year ban. So we've kind of got that in the works, and hopefully we should have something soon to present to council.
Okay. Any questions for the committee? Thanks, Charlie. Good start. Okay, personnel met twenty-ninth. Minutes are in the packet.
Yeah, we met, we're short-staffed right now. We're, we had a series of candidates leave the village, and we had an opening, and we had, we were interviewing an applicant for that position. And so that's what we met on the twenty-ninth to meet that candidate and ask a lot of questions back and forth. And we met again today, kind of did some reference checks and did some more talking. And our village administrator's gonna kind of reach out and do some more checking yet before we decide if we're gonna offer the job or not, so.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay, thanks, Erica. Committee? Administrator's report, you're up. Cory?
Okay. Today, I did send the paperwork back to Stark's Plumbing and Heating, and they will be coming to the police department, fire department, the two offices down at the street garage and here at city hall. And they will be putting what they call an high-wave purification system into the units. It is all being paid for through the COVID funds. We did have an issue a couple weeks ago down at the sewer plant. PLC system went down. And it was found that the reasoning for it was basically a lack of maintenance over the years with it. It was repaired. Everything is now back up and running. Recalibrated. All the data had to be re-rolled for our plant. This afternoon, I had signed off on the awards for the Wellfield Project for Division A and Division B. So now Jones and Henry are in the process of putting those contracts together for the, for the winning contractors there. And then last Tuesday, we had a water main break over on Wendell Avenue. I want to thank our street department and our water department. They, they do a wonderful job. It took them about five hours to do it, and they did a, they did a really good job with it. Friday was our last day for leaf pickup. I'm sure a lot of people won't be happy with that, but we had to, we had to pull the plug on it at some point so we can start getting equipment around for, for snow season. And then, I don't see Scott here, but we did list the rescue squad on gun deals, and it ended at five-thirty this afternoon, and it ended up selling for thirteen thousand one oh five.
Wow.
So. And like two hours ago, it was sitting about seven thousand, so.
What's a, what's a PLC? The main control PLC went down.
Programical logical control, it's the, pretty much the brain of any kind of VD drive railing.
Did that cause any compliance issues going down?
No, it did, it did not.
I didn't know from, if that entailed like your daily operating issues or anything?
Me?
Yeah.
No, that's-
Oh, wastewater, sorry. My apologies.
Different smell to the water. Different smell to it.
Especially taste.
That tastes good.
We were actually fortunate enough, Lucas was actually in the office and noticed that the screen just went black on it, and he couldn't get, come back up. So his first call was to IFM, and then they had contacted me. It was in the, I don't know, six o'clock or so at night. And they had a guy down here the next day checking into it, and then a programmer to rewrite the system. There was no backup to be found anywhere. The company that installed it no longer does that type of work, so they had no, nothing on the flash drive, so. We have a backup for the backup.
Pretty extensive fix? Or was it just a crash, or did we have to replace?
For the most part, it was a crash. The extensive part was rewriting the program for, for that campus down there.
Any questions for Cory?
Good job on the weed pickups you guys were right on.
No way to extend that anyhow, because it took, leaves a long, long time to fall down. And I've got them in my front yard.
Should have went up the tree.
And I rode around and this morning, and there's a lot of people still having piled up in the yard.
The recycling plant is open, it'll take the leaves, and I think, what's the hours, when are hours now?
Yeah, we're Thursdays and Saturdays.
What time can you guys come down and load them up?
I do have a question. Do you guys charge for appliance recycling, or do you get to drop, just, you just drop them off when they're open?
There's dumpster down there.
Okay.
Recycle.
Usually Billy will help you unload it.
Okay, any other questions for the administrator? Okay, thanks, Cory. Solicitor's report, I guess I get to read these tonight. First reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen by caption only to approve twenty-twenty-two appropriations and declaring an emergency.
I make a motion to suspend?
Second.
Second. What's that on, man?
That's solicitor's report, should be on your-
That's, what's in your left hand? All the numbers for the appropriations.
Oh, okay.
The big dog.
Gotcha. I had one question on that.
I did too. I got a couple.
Go ahead.
Number first. I was talking about the park. I talked, talked about our park board meeting. I don't know if you ever got with Cheryl. We were trying to, we are actually outreaching to the Metro Park Board, if I get that name correctly. It's the Defiance Governors that handle their property for the village park. I have a meeting with them tomorrow night, kind of showing them all the plans we have for the park. We talked about the walking trail, just kind of giving them an update on some of the improvements that they're looking at, short-term, long-term. A walking trail, park pavilion, you know, we talked about a splash pad, different things like that. But they're upgrading the fencing and some of the dirt work on the softball side. And they talked about trying to get some handicapped sidewalks or sidewalks up to some of the designated areas on the girls' softball side. There are no sidewalks over there. So we're kind of outreaching to them to see if they have additional money that they would be willing to give to those, some of those projects. I was hoping that if they were able to do that, that we would come up with some additional money, not funding the entire project. But earmarking it that way, if it does come to fruition this next year, then we would be able to put some money into the project in itself. Am I getting that right, Cheryl? And also, there's some of the projects that incorporate the school, for the varsity softball girls and stuff. So if any of these things would be in conjunction with the three entities, then we all could pitch in and get those projects on. If they come to fruition. If not, then the money would sit there and not be used until it was what happened, so. Was that bumped up at all?
I think the twenty, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars for park. I think that's more than ample for what they're asking. There's actually, there's four entities, actually. There's the village, the school, Defiance Metropolitan, and softball association.
Right, and they're, and they're working-
And if they all pitch in their portion, every, everything on their dream list should be able to get done this summer.
That's in capital L.A., right? Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I thought the twenty-one went towards the fencing, field four.
We pay for it all.
Right.
That's, yeah.
Correct, that we, we threw the twenty-one, so we got the twenty-five in there. The twenty-one was basically at a bare minimum. If nobody else decides that they want to take part in participating, we can at least cover the expense of field four.
Right.
Field four.
Schools not gonna pay for anything, because they don't use that one.
Right.
Split it three ways, it's less than seven thousand dollars each.
But I thought we were talking about some additional, and maybe I'm wrong, but a little bit more fluff in that, than that side of it, too, in case something else comes to fruition and earmarked. But I could be mistaken, so.
Okay. Any other questions on the appropriations?
I was just gonna discuss the amount we've budgeted for refuse. I realize that's for, you know, the used garbage on station, the leaf pickups and everything that they've done besides garbage. I just thought that was a lot of money, but I'm sure you guys gave it a lot of thought, but.
That's under street, or is that?
Under refuse. Three hundred and fifty thousand round numbers, this seems like a lot of money to pick up leaves and run that corner station.
Is that for trash pickup?
Yeah, that's where the trash-
Seventeen, fifty thousand a month. Roller seventeen thousand a month.
Yeah.
Two hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah. Is that your contract, Cheryl?
Yes.
Yeah.
That and the mosquito spray, that's in that.
That's what your seventies for?
Yeah, that's, no, the seventy would go to something like that.
Okay. What's the ten for, just for, like, if the leaf sucker goes bad or something?
Emergency.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it wasn't a big deal, I just-
Well, good question, that's why we were here.
There's a lot of money there. Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
Any other?
Do we know how much comes, because don't we get, on our water bills, we pay a portion for refuse, right? So what's that revenue that would cover that? No, I mean, like, how much is that for the whole village, with all the village citizens paying?
What do you mean?
These, these numbers aren't involved in, in, in what we pay on our water bill.
We have a copy of it in here.
We're only paying roller's bill.
For November.
Right, okay, I just was wondering how much the village citizens pay of this portion.
Yeah, good question.
In here, later on.
Okay. Jumped ahead, sorry, Cheryl.
No, gotta make sure it's done right here, so everybody's happy.
One thing I, we had brought up at the finance committee meetings, as well as I had talked with Cheryl this week, is about setting aside funds for the planning process. At least needs discovery for a new municipal building. We currently have seventy thousand dollars sit in, sitting in capital outlay for grounds. That dollar amount's typically set aside for emergencies, for building repairs, that sort of thing. Talking with Cheryl, she advised to basically leave the seventy thousand sitting in grounds. However, maybe towards the beginning of the year, as we further conversations with the municipal planner or an architecture firm, we can allocate a specific amount of that, of that capital outlays project, or the capital outlays dollars into a designated fund to be spent on planning processes, so.
Just the research of it all.
Correct. So it's about, I've talked with an architecture firm, Cheryl talked with a municipal planning, or at least somebody who knows pricing of municipal planners, about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars typically covers sitting down, doing a needs discovery with everybody, every department, that sort of thing, and then basically making a recommendation on square footage they can help with. Schematic design, site selection, those sort of things. So that still leaves a pretty decent sized chunk of money in there for capital outlay and grounds. But then that also will accomplish the, I think, what we should start looking towards. So that will come here at the beginning of the year, hopefully.
Good. We need that.
You did the second.
Suspend the rules, the second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Second, third reading. Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen by caption only to approve twenty-twenty-two appropriations and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion before we vote? Roll call.
Marth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin? Bridgeway?
Yes.
Okay, thanks to the committee, did a good job. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five. A resolution expressing support for the enterprise zone agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Defiance County, Ohio, Hicksville Health Facilities LLC, and Vancrest of Hicksville LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Second, third reading. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five. A resolution expressing support for the enterprise zone agreement between the Board of Commissioners of Defiance County, Ohio, and Hicksville Health Facilities LLC, and Vancrest of Hicksville LLC, and declaring an emergency.
It's a move.
Second? Roll call.
You did the second. Arby? Bridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Marth?
Yes.
Okay.
Got it.
I'll sign the papers and get it over to you then.
Thanks, Charlie.
Guess I'm gonna sign it now.
Sign it, and she can get it on her way back home. The mayor heard you.
Thanks, Troy.
Cheryl, do we have to add to the agenda? Do we have to add that resolution to the agenda?
I would have, I didn't have time.
I know.
He just sent it to me before we started.
Good catch. Okay. Department has police. Chief, you have anything to report?
I have nothing. I put together a report for the stats, but it didn't write the, it wrote the call for service for the month, but didn't write my cases for the month, so I have to figure out what I did wrong. So, and I'll get those out to you before, prior to this. I'll just probably put them, start trying to put them in your packets. So, I know there's over four hundred calls for service, so.
You want Fish to help him?
Chief had a good meeting with the Christmas cruise crew, so we got a plan for, so next, is coming Sunday?
It's coming.
So we got a good plan, so. Any questions for the chief? Okay.
Appreciate the hard work.
Fire EMS? Fire EMS, I talked to Scott earlier. He's not here. Park director, nobody's from the park here. Questions on the park?
I got a question on the fire chief. We've gotta get, we've got a police and fire, it's gotta get together.
I talked to Scott, and I gotta find out when he's free to have a meeting. I talked to him tonight, too.
We gotta do something fast.
I talked to him tonight, so.
And we talked the last personnel meeting, too, trying to set a date, but we wanna do some research first before we set up a meeting.
And I did make the calls and stuff, but I saved it. Wonderful.
Okay. Cheryl, fiscal officers report?
If anyone has questions about the fund status or cash summary by fund for the year, we finally brought more in than we spent for the first time all year, I think. And this is that report you're talking about, Charlie. That's everything broken down for water, sewer, and trash for the month of November. We also have the one for taxes. And looking at it from year to date, the very last, from twenty to twenty-one, looks good. I'm so shocked. But it's two hundred thousand more than last year. I have the collections from the Police Department, collections from Mayor's Court, and our up-to-date revolving loan, which I'm telling you, you need to start giving away money, because we are only making thirteen thousand a month. I mean, we got money to give out. And you also have a two-page media com list of changes with your new rates that everybody got in the village. And I also, it's not in your packet, but just to let you know, we do have the two vandalisms down at the park that were juveniles. They are paying their fines. And so I've been collecting their money. They're almost paid off.
So we were able to capture the villains in each one?
Yes.
Perfect.
And they had to go to juvenile court and pay their fines. I'll have, you have any questions?
Any questions for Cheryl? Okay. Mayor's report. Remind everybody the Christmas cruise through is till the twenty-third of December. Fireworks is this Sunday, the twelfth. Another thing I'd like to bring up, I mentioned this before, all councilmen are partisan when they run. I don't know if council's interested in making it nonpartisan, I'd like your input on that.
Definitely.
Okay, well, I called the election board, but I didn't wanna go further if you guys, and the one, there are some advantages, you don't have to have a primary, okay? And if we do have a primary, the city has to pay half the cost unless the city or the school. I think it's around twelve thousand dollars to have a primary. So if the school's in it, we'd have to pay six, but the school would have to, if they have a levy. So, we're the only entity in the county that don't, that has partisan.
Okay.
Defiance doesn't, nay, I guess that's it. Sure, but Defiance is nonpartisan. So anyway, do you?
Well, I would make a motion that we move to a nonpartisan council seat.
Well, he has to bring legislation, but I did make the contact just to see the cost and the advantages, and, okay, I'll.
Well, the straw vote won't hurt anything.
The what?
Straw vote's not gonna hurt anything.
Well, it'll come to, from Troy, legislation, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was on board.
That's what I'm saying straw votes for, to let you know that.
Well, it sounds like everybody's shaking their head, so.
Yeah, you can hear it, that.
Yeah, I can hear your head. So anyway, I'll get with Troy, start the process. And see, another thing, Cory's been a solicitor, administrator for six months, and I did evaluation at three months, and I just finished one at six months, and I'd recommend taking him off probation. And I don't know if I can set the salary, but I'd like to see his salary raised three thousand. So anyway.
Me?
I recommend taking him off probation.
Make motion except the mayor's recommendation?
Second.
My second.
Roll call.
It's tough to do, but.
With the off probation and the raise?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're the one that wouldn't pick my leaves up?
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
She got leaves, mine are. Okay.
Ridgeway?
Was that a yes?
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Any questions for me? Larry has one meeting.
Yeah, well, Matt, that, you wanna say that we're on SMTA now, Bill?
Yeah.
We are now on SMTA, channel eight.